Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. It is now called to order for October 26, 2021. We will now take a moment for silent prayer or meditation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Vice Chair Lewis.
Please rise and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every day and every time.
A moment of silent prayer and meditation. Please be seated. Joanne, can you please call roll?
Prior to calling roll, I would like to make the, keep, put it in record that Commissioner Gutierrez has an, is, has an excused absence. He had contacted our division and let, to let us know that he had a doctor's appointment today and could not attend. However, we tried, we did try to get him through Zoom, but due to technical difficulties, we were not able to set that up for this particular meeting. So I'll go ahead and start off with the roll. Vice Chair Lewis?
Present.
Chair Becerra?
Here.
Commissioner Hang?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have minutes from the regular Planning Commission meeting on October 12, 2021. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? The minutes are approved as submitted. Oral communications. This is a time when any member of the public may speak to the Commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the Commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included in this agenda may be addressed when the item is under consideration. For oral communications, the chairperson may impose reasonable limitations on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meeting. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the Planning Commission and staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting. Thus, your comments may be agendized for a future meeting or referred to staff. The Commission may ask questions for clarification if desired at this time. By policy of the Commission, oral communications at this time on the agenda is limited to a total of 15 minutes. Would anyone like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? We will now move to the public hearing portion of this meeting. Tonight, we have one public hearing. Joanne? Who will present the staff report?
Our planning assistant, Camilia Martinez, will be presenting the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is item, item number two is the proposed wireless telecommunications facility. The applicant is Coastal Business Group on behalf of AT&amp;T. The address is 3540 East Cameron Avenue. It is owned, R1, single-family residential, and the lot size is 55,209 square feet. To the north of this property, it's single-family residential. To the east, it's also single-family residential, but it's unincorporated LA County. To the south is single-family residential, but it's on a city-owned property that we are deeming as open space. And to the west is also city, a single-family residential, which is owned by the city as well, but that is Heritage Park. As required by the code, the proposed facility must be 100 feet away from any residential uses, and this project does meet it. A residential property located on a private street in the east side on the unincorporated LA County is approximately 176 feet from the proposed wireless facility, and the home itself is approximately 211 feet away from the facility. So this is the site plan here. Outlined in red is the property line. In blue, we have the existing water tanks. And in this blue square here is the facility for the Valencia Heights equipment, and this is their property, the Valencia Heights Water District's water tank and facility. They do have an unpaved area highlighted here in gray, and then, as part of this proposal, they are proposing to, to pave it so that there is a better driveway access. There are three existing willow trees highlighted here in these green dots, and they will stay. They are not proposed to be removed. And then, we have the mono-eucalyptus facility itself, the proposed equipment cabinets and structure, and the separated detach generator. And we have some more landscaping here, which I'll go more into detail. So once again, this is the mono-eucalyptus facility, and then, we have the cabinets within a proposed enclosure and the detached generator. As part of the conditions of approval, the applicant will be required to install two 24-inch box eucalyptus trees to go more with the design of the proposed mono-eucalyptus as the surrounding has willow trees and other vegetation. And then, highlighted in this green strip, another condition of approval is that they add more climbing vines and bushes because this is an existing chain link fence that you can see through into Heritage Park, and we are requiring that they put more vegetation in so that there is more natural screening, and you won't be able to see it from the hiking trails eventually, once it grows in. In this elevation, we have the proposed structure and the detached generator, as well as the, the main pole for the mono-eucalyptus with the three-pronged branches. And in this orange highlight are the proposed antennas, and in this red highlight is the proposed co-location should another company or wireless carrier wish to move in in the future. This is a potential area where they can, but it's not being proposed at this time. It will be at 60 feet, which is the maximum height allowed by our code. And then, this is just a generic area of how the branching will be drawn in, but the renduans will show you a better understanding. So we have several photo simulations. This one is from the hiking trail at Heritage Park. So on the left photo, you'll see the balloon test, and on the right, you'll see the stimulation of the proposed mono-eucalyptus. On all of these, it's, it's small and it's kind of difficult to see, but it is there. The next visual is along Cameron Avenue. The next one is at the top of the residential property to the east, which is the unincorporated LA County section on a private street. The other entrance trail off of Cameron Avenue. And our last one here at the trail entrance at Hillside Drive, which is above the facility. The applicant held a community meeting on August 23, 2021 via Zoom because of COVID, and 18 notices were mailed out, the same notices we sent out a public hearing notice to, to those residents so they could attend the community meeting, and no members of the community attended. Staff did receive one response against the proposed project, which I believe was emailed and also provided to you today. Staff is recommending approval to adopt resolution and the conditional use permit 2103. My following slides are the justification plots that the applicant can get more into detail, should they wish, or should you have questions specifically on those. This does conclude my presentation. If you have any questions for me or for the applicant, we would both be more than willing to answer them.
Does any of the member, any member of the Commission have any questions for the staff? Commissioner Williams?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Hang?
Not at this time.
Vice Chair Lewis? Okay, so at this time, we'll open public hearing, and we'll hear from the applicant? Yes?
Hello, my name is Jessica Grevin. I work with Coastal Business Group on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility. AT&amp;T, the coverage maps just show the significant gap in coverage for the installation of the wireless facility and after, and as well as the photo simulations show how it blends into the surrounding areas.
Could you please speak into, or you can pull it down a little bit?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so the photo simulations, as well as the propagation map, show how the facility would blend into the existing screening, as well as this significant gap in coverage for the wireless facility. But I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Did you have anything to add to it, the staff?
Nope, everything she said was correct.
Does the Commission have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Hang? Vice Chair Lewis?
So, the, the city ordinance regarding the installation of cell phones or telecommunications sites in the city has a preference in it for cities, city-owned sites. Can you give me, you give me some sort of background on why this was not considered for the, I guess, Heritage Park location, and what, if any, negotiations you had with the city, and I guess, why those seemingly did not go anywhere?
Sure. So, kind of a little background, RF will provide us with a search ring, correct? That's generally about a half a mile in length of where the coverage is needed. So one of those was being Heritage Park. We did reach out to the city mayor at the time and tried to do, do negotiations with them. However, in, in terms of the terms and the rental price, AT&amp;T and the city could not come to an agreement, and the city then said if we couldn't come to agreement, then they didn't want to do a lease with us.
And my, my understanding from reading the staff report is that this was the preferred site, correct? This was number one?
That's correct. We did try to place it at several locations within that area, within the half-mile radius. Just, there was a lot of the properties owned by a developer who was going to build residential property, so they didn't want to lease any space at that time, and then, it was the Valencia Water District and then Heritage Park.
With, with regard to that site, why is it that the electronic, the electronics cabinets, or whatever you want to call that, that storage area is, why is it above ground, not underground?
Well, it, we can't place it underground due to the water facility having underground piping, so that's something that the water, the Valencia Water District did not want us to do. It is placed above ground within a CMU wall, which I believe was per the code, and then, it's painted as well to match.
So, so Valencia Water District will not allow you to place, place an underground vault there for that?
They have underground piping that we had to be careful with, even with our trenching to get power and conduit to the site. We had to be very careful with how, and how deep we could trench, and it wasn't very deep.
And so, immediately below that, your understanding is that there is piping?
Correct.
Immediately below that?
That, that's what my understanding is. I mean, another reason why AT&amp;T doesn't vault as well, obviously, is to do with heating aspects with the equipment. It gets very hot down there. But the equipment cabinet shouldn't be seen with all the screening.
I, I, I just have concerns, generally speaking, with regard to that area because that area in particular has been just a hot zone for graffiti and various other things over the past, I don't know, 20 years that I can think of. I, I'm, I'm really hesitant about having an above-ground vault there, and frankly, they're just unsightly. I, I don't know. I, I don't understand why in that area, so I, I, I need to know why the, why there would be piping there and not toward the street. I, I'm not following why there would be piping in that area. I'd like more information on that.
Sure, and then, AT&amp;T also, when we paint the CMU walls, we do paint it with, you know, anti-graffiti paint, and then, also, AT&amp;T techs are out there at least once a month checking on equipment, so if there was graffiti, it would be cleaned up.
Do you, do you have any information about feasibility of an underground vault?
It would be something that we would, I would have to revisit with the Water District, but when we discussed it with them, it was that they had underground piping with their facility. And then, as well as, you know, we're with the CMU wall up per the code.
I want you to have a question, though. You showed a photo sim up there. Could you bring that, can you bring that map up, please?
I'm sorry, which one?
The photo sim of the coverage, the map.
Oh, the propagation map.
The propagation map. Now, the propagation map here, you're saying that there, basically, this map is produced from some type of data. Is that correct?
That's correct. Our RF engineer provides these propagation maps.
Okay. From this propagation map and from the data that you have derived from, I'd like to see what are the number, the data that you have, because this is just a map that you just, you know, come from a bunch of data for us. I get that. But I also like to see if you can provide us informations on, you said significant gap. What is the significant gap?
Sure. I mean, the gapping, the cell tower obviously provides multiple uses. It provides the usage of, if there's drop calls, it provides the usage for streaming and data in the area. I mean, a lot of people are working from home, so then, therefore, there's more necessary needs for a cell phone tower. It also could be the fact that another site nearby is at max capacity, so then, this site would help alleviate the, the data from that site and help with this site. This site also provides Bursonet, which is a frequency and radio that helps for first responders, and this is something that AT&amp;T is mandated to have on every cell phone tower, and so this is another item that's included with the tower. So, I mean, yes, it provides significant gap in coverage, and that's the main, that's our main need, but I mean, the cell phone tower also provides multiple areas, and as far as data that I can go for, a lot of this information is from our RF engineer, and so, I would have to speak with them and see if there's other information that they could provide for that form.
Thank you. You, you covered quite a bit of, of, you mentioned capacity, you mentioned data, you mentioned radio frequency, but the map that you had generated and you had put in front of us today, you mentioned significant, significant gap. If that is true, I'd like to have that number, and I can, so I can see if there's a gap, where is it, and how many are the gaps? Now, whether it's, if you have the different gaps, then yeah, by all means, show us that as well. Like, if you mentioned capacity gaps, you mentioned data, you know, shortage or data, I don't know what you call it earlier, you were going pretty fast, and also for future, future, I don't know if you wanted to say certain other gaps, but I'd like to see that because right now, it's just a map, it's just color. It doesn't have any informations for me to say, hey, look, this is the area, because that area is pretty rural, and it's either an acre or two acres per household. So I'd like to see what your engineer had come up with, to see in terms of what and how many people it's been impacted in this, in this area for our West Covina area, and also the surrounding area.
Yeah, there's a last page of the prop maps. Do you have that by chance?
Uh, yeah.
That talks about which each color and how this prop maps are labeled and how you could maybe, it would help read it.
Right.
It's in that little color quarter. It states which color is provided in the vehicle, which coverage is provided in a house, which cover is provided on the street, so it's showing you the coverage map for each of those locations.
Correct. So which is good. I mean, now that you have the color green, I see green, I see yellow, and I see pinkish color, which is wonderful. You have that, you have that in color, and I'd like to hear from your engineer, just provide some information to show me that, okay, that is a significant gap of some sort. That's just a color. You just paint it in a certain area, but how many people? I don't know. So that's all. Thank you, though. So, this actually is an addition for our cell tower, or due to your other location being?
At capacity or?
At full capacity. So, is this something that the clients in the area have petitioned? Have they requested it?
So, no. So RF engineer obviously can, a lot of times, the reason why a cell phone tower is being brought up is because there's customers that are going to the stores and saying that they're not having coverage in the area, or it's the capacity issue. So that's a cell site that the RF is seeing is getting overloaded, and it's the equipment being shut down, or the equipment's not serving then all the customers that it can, so then therefore, another site pops up, and then, that would help communicate, the two towers would communicate with each other and help alleviate.
So it's really a matter of better business on AT&amp;T's part, not a public request?
Well, it's a, it's a public need since the coverage, and then, the coverage is needed. With the prop maps, I mean, I don't know necessarily, necessarily what information RF engineer could provide to show you the number of people. They're just seeing it in a broad span of the coverage that's needed, so that's why the cell site's going up.
Anyone have any more questions for the applicant? Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Hang? Vice Chair Lewis? Okay, at this time, thank you. We'll go ahead and open this up for the public. We're going to hear for those. We don't have any in favor. We'll start for, with Lisa.
Good evening, Planning Commission staff and residents. With tonight's discussion with the cell tower, it is very simple. It's not a new conversation, and we've had this conversation many times over the past few years. And I did want to mention that the Planning Commission here are representatives and not the corporation, so I would like if you could help defend our interests and our rights, as I'm sure you know and feel the same, which is why you have been chosen to serve us here today, and I appreciate all of your time here. So the telecom lobbying over the years have chipped away many of our rights, and the court and the city have managed to preserve many in our favor. For example, the law prevents authorities from taking into consideration health and environmental impact into consideration for the cell towers, but the law still preserves the local zoning authority with the right for the placement. In other words, ideally not in a residential zoning, and the construction and, which is the how big and tall these cell towers can be, and also the modification and its aesthetics. In this discussion, you heard the term significant gap, and it is a fancy term for a dead zone, which from the map that I have observed, doesn't really have any, as it still has certain coverage. And if there is additional data provided, then that would be good for the residents to see if there are actually dead zones, but from what I have seen in this presentation, there aren't any. And I would like to know how many people are experiencing it, and precisely what areas are experiencing it, so the placement can be accurate if necessary. And unfortunately, there has been no specific data proving that there are dead zones or significant gap, so I would hope that you can insist for data in proving that there is one before placing a cell tower nearby a residential area. Like, likewise, there are terms such as the future gap, capacity gap, or any other gap, which are all related to dead zones, so I would hope you take that into consideration as well. In other words, right now, they're trying to sell a solution to a nonexistent problem, so I don't want to have more things in this area that we don't necessarily need, especially in a zoning that is residential. So, the danger is allowing this foothold in our community because it's going to be a flood. Once you let one in, there's going to be many others to come, and I don't want one little tower to be installed now and a 100-foot tower to be installed in the same area later. So, like Councilmember Lewis brought up earlier, we took the trouble to bury the water tanks on the side of the hill at great cost to preserve the natural beauty of the city, but now, we want to put an intrusive tower into the middle of the residential area, which I don't think is a very good idea, especially with the Heritage Park very close by and the residential area, you know, and even, you know, that general area is just a lot of residential, and a lot of people do see it. It's not obscured. And honestly, none of us want to see these giant towers sticking up on our way home, when we're going on hikes, while we're walking around in our neighborhoods, and also, no other additional cities nearby us actually allow it. So please, represent us, have you, sorry, please represent us as you have done so steadfastly in the past by saying no to this permit tonight. I also have some additional materials I would like to provide the council members that have done some research from neighboring cities that I would like to share with the Commissioners. So like I said before, in other cities, specifically, I've done the research for the city of Walnut, which is right next door to us. They currently do not allow any of these cell towers near residential zones. In the code 6.88060 in their design standards, the telecommunications towers and antennas shall not be located within 1,500 feet of any school, nursery, elementary, high school, and junior high, trail, park, or recreational area, sporting venue, and residential zone, which is 1,500 feet compared to the 100 that this plan proposes. So I do hope that you take this into consideration for tonight's meeting, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Elsie Messman?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elsie Messman, and I'm a resident of West Covina. As far as I'm concerned, on this tower, all these equipment that they want to build a fence or a wall that's eight feet high or whatever, apparently, I think there's an ordinance that said all equipment must be underground on the cell towers, and I think if you check that out to make sure that it is right, because if that's the case and they can't put it underground because of the pipes, then it's the end of the case. I said, they've got to go someplace else, and if that's the case, you know, maybe they should try Walnut or Covina or something else, because like you say, that equipment should be underground, and I know it costs more, and the graffiti, we've got it up in our area, and the graffiti is, like you say, if there's a blank wall, there's going to be graffiti, and if they just come to check it once a month or whatever, I said... And if they just come to check it once a month or whatever, I said, then it's going to be disaster. So I don't think this should be approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Colleen Maxwell?
Good evening, all your city council member. I'm not used to come to speak like this, so anyway, but this really concerned me because my house, they want to build at a 3540, right? My house is 3530, so it's only about 400 feet away from where they want to build an ugly, what, 60 foot post antenna? It definitely would affect not only me, but we have about six or seven houses up in that area. Then our property value would really go down dramatically. And I don't know why they would choose to build something in a residential area. They could have moved it somewhere, somewhere else with less people reside there. And then, so, so on top of it, once you let them to build the first one, you never know how many more they can build on it. So in that case, it would really decrease the property values there. And just like I mentioned, one of the regulations, you cannot have anything within 1,500 from a residential area. My house is, I'd say maybe about 400, so that is so close to it. And I just don't even understand why they would even think of having something like that in a place so close to people living there. Okay, so that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty? Is it McClair?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for hearing me. I've been a resident here for over 25 years. I live on the golf course in South Hills, so I'm a stone's throw from where they want to do the tower. And I'm here again, I fought one a few years ago and we beat them. So I'm back to fight another one because I don't like them, I think they're ugly, I think they ruin South Hills, the golf course, the beautiful landscape. So my main point tonight is just going to bring up a couple of points. Number one, I agree with Ms. Heng that I'd like to see more data on this coverage map because as far as I'm concerned about data, I have an AT&amp;T phone and a Verizon phone, I don't get dropped calls anymore. It's not like 15 years ago, you know, we all dropped calls every five minutes, that never happens. I haven't had that happen in so long, so I don't really, I don't know if I trust their data or if anything, I'd like to see the data. Show me where the drop calls are, who has them, what neighborhood, what street, just because I, you know, I'm just kind of leery about a big company's presentation, call me skeptical, but I'd like to see the facts before I have something like that come into our neighborhood and ruin it, you know? So that's about the data. On another thing, there's two issues. Once we put a cell tower into these neighborhoods, and first of all, it is a beautiful residential neighborhood and I thought they weren't supposed to be close to those, that's an issue. If, once they do come in though, and somebody allows them, what happens is, there's some laws on the books, number one is the placement and the construction of it, and then number two, it's called the, it's called a growing tree. And the second issue is the farming of it. What it is, is there's two different laws. The first one is, once they build the tower, there's a, there's a law, let me see which one it is. It is a law that's the FCC Section 6409 that explains that once a new cell tower is approved, they cannot by law stop the addition to it. It can literally grow 20 feet each time a new request is put in. For instance, once the tree's put up, this tree, any new company that wants to add on, they can add 20 feet each time, so this thing can exponentially get bigger and bigger and by law, we can't do anything about it. That's number one. There's also a second law. This is put out by Code 704A and it states that you cannot stop the farm of the cell tower growth. Again, it's like a dystopian nightmare from a Tim Burton movie. Because here it is in law, you can't stop the farm. Once you got one, another one can come in and if you don't let the other guy in, it's discrimination against that other company. And the laws, I have copies of them, right here for you guys. So I'd like to pass these out so you guys have them. So in all, because of those laws, I just don't trust this thing to not keep growing and turning into a Tim Burton movie, hanging over and looming over our beautiful neighborhood. That's what scares me the most. I used to walk Heritage Dog all the time with my dog and it's just absolutely beautiful up there, when you get up there and you can see everything and I just don't want it ruined. And lastly, I plead with you guys, our council members and everybody to hopefully stop this, hopefully it goes away because you guys have all the power to help us and to help our beautiful community and hopefully we can stop it. So here's, do you guys like copies of the laws that I'm talking about?
Sure.
Okay, let me give you these. One, two, three. So thank you very much for your time and have a good evening.
Ian Pike?
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Ian Pike, I've been a resident of West Covina for 33 years. I actually live in close proximity to where this tower is being proposed. As a resident and one that represents many other West Covina residents, I respectfully ask you to decline the conditional use permit. West Covina has always protected our residential areas. Residents have consistently pushed back on cell towers and for good reason. We have worked hard to provide compelling reasons each time this issue has come up. We are thankful to the city for hearing us and voting in our favor in all past years, most recently '15, 2018, 2019. Our neighboring cities also strongly oppose towers in residential areas, with Walnut having a 1,500 feet away restriction. That's five football field lengths, that's a, that's a long way. This proposal, I believe, was 100 feet. This room, I believe, is probably about 100 feet. That's pretty close to a residential house. The city of Diamond Bar also only allows in their commercial areas. Please do not set a precedence for West Covina to allow cell towers in our residential areas. I would like to echo Commissioner Heng's statements. Metrics, it's so important. It's not unusual for telcos to provide misleading, subjective or inaccurate information to the city, staff and commissioner, even worse, to provide no info. It's the telco's responsibility to provide you this information. You know, if there's no verifiable metrics, then there shouldn't be consideration given. And if there's no validated gaps, drop calls or dead spots, then consideration shouldn't be given. Do we know how many clients, AT&amp;T clients are in that area? I would venture to say few, very, very few. From a percentage standpoint, I'd venture to say less than 1%. So I think metrics are really, really important. I know I walk my dog along that area all the time. I walk through the back of Virginia Lane, out onto Cameron, all the way up to Heritage Park, into Heritage Park. I'm often on my phone and I have no problem, no drop calls. Our city's power is preserved by the FCC, the city does not have to allow a tower. It's important to be knowledgeable about the laws that telco will cite and how those laws can impact our neighborhoods. And the lady before me spoke to this. The 2012 Middle Class Tax Relief Act allows telcos to grow towers up to 20 feet sections at a time. Allowing one, others will jump on, it's a competitive business and so we can expect that tower to get uglier and uglier and taller and taller. And the second one that the lady spoke to is, once you allow one, you can't discriminate, it's just a foregone conclusion that other carriers will add on. Aesthetics are extremely important to our residents. These towers are not pretty by any means and get worse and worse in very short order as they are built out. It's an eyesore and ugly for residents that get to look at it every day. It's one of those things where once you see the eyesore, you can't let it go and it eats away at you. It affects one's quality of life. I feel bad for the lady who spoke earlier, living just 400 feet away, she's going to look at that every day. She's gonna, it's just going to ruin her quality of life. And to me, one person's quality of life is important, doesn't matter if it's 10, 100, 1,000, one's enough. City has the authority to deny on the basis of aesthetics. Finally, residents feel so strongly on this issue that the last time this came up, we raised several thousand dollars, the fee the city required for us residents to be heard. Thankfully, the city heard us and supported our position. That cost was four and a half thousand dollars, we didn't get that money back. Part of that was my money. Thank you for your consideration and please say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick?
Good evening, city planners and appreciate all your efforts and everybody's time to come here to speak out against this effort to put a commercial structure in a residential area. I think the whole effort to try to squash this at this moment, like the gentleman who just spoke, brought up a really good point. We don't have to basically fight this after approval process, which requires us to, you know, put up money to put in a request and all the other exercise that was done a couple of years back. So I just want to reiterate a couple of points that's already been brought up. One was the notion of significant gap. I think if everybody's unclear, that's essentially equal to dead zone. So if the vendor or the AT&amp;T, this case, their RF engineer can't provide that, then you guys have the authority to deny it because there's no gap that they need to fill. And that's essentially dead zones. And future, capacity, those are all things that is not equal to significant gap. So this is to be crystal clear in that and, you know, they can come in rebut that if they have a different definition of it, but my understanding is that dead zone, drop calls, those are the significant gap. So the other items that were also brought up and I'll reiterate again is, the city has the authority, the planning commission and the city actually has codes in place to generally, that we should adhere to, which is if it's a residential area, we should keep that conforming to a residential form. People buy into this area because there's a certain aesthetics that they're wanting to live in and appreciate the value of that. So, you know, the city needs to preserve that and if you are to approve one, and again, this is covered before, it becomes an opportunity to build out this infrastructure. And I'm in, my professional job is infrastructure, so I know we need this, but there's certain areas and certain locations where you need it. And this is not one of it. The authority that you'll be giving up if you were to approve this one is what he and the ladies gentlemen mentioned before, which is with the laws from 2012, you can't stop the growth of the tree. So 60 feet now and that rendering, I don't know who did it, but we need to measure the height of that tree around it, that looks short. I'm not sure, I mean, it'd be nice to be able to tell you, hey, this is the height of the tree and what the projected growth is going to look like, say at 60 feet, and then measure the tree around it and then the cell tower and then add 20 to that for the request and add another 20 for it and just to see what the growth increment looks like and what it'll ultimately end up looking like if the need and ultimately, you know, the request comes in. And of course, the growth and the farming of these cell towers, the ability for the owner of the property to approve or to allow more, that's going to be an issue for you too, because you essentially give up that right to stop that from happening, I believe. So you need to preserve that and make sure we preserve the aesthetics of the surrounding area. So, let's see here, I covered that already, aesthetics, we covered really fast, I think all the other gentlemen covered. So again, just to recap, there, the authority that we maintain for the planning commission, that's, let's use it to, one, get the vendor or get the companies, AT&amp;T in this case, to show that there's a significant gap there that we need to deal with, which is absolutely just the drop calls and that they're dead zones. If they can't show that, then, you know, we can, you guys can preserve the quality of the area, the aesthetics of the area by denying it right here.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come up and reply to any of the concerns of the residents?
So there was a couple of things I wanted to touch on and one of those being the 6409, Section 6409. I did want to reiterate that that law states that a carrier can come in and modify the tower up to 20 feet, but it stops at 20 feet. You're only allowed to extend it one time. And then as far as the need for the cell site in the area, as you know, these cell sites are not cheap to install. And so RF really looks into the areas of where it's needed. We get these rings, like I said, it's like half mile, the properties are slim to none to try to find a cell site because we're just trying to feed this area. As well as these cell sites also, because AT&amp;T is mandated to include first net on these cell sites, which again, that provides service to first responders. Which that does is, if in the case of a disaster, if the cell site has to get shut down because there's not power in the area, these antennas stay on so that way first responders are able to use these antennas in the case of emergencies. These, AT&amp;T is required to install a certain number of these antennas per the government's guidelines and the FCC guidelines, and this is one of them that is needed in this area. That was really my main points that I wanted to reiterate. Do you guys have anything else?
Does, do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I just had one question. Are you aware of AT&amp;T ever actually installing equipment actually on the water towers themselves?
Yes, so we do have some sites that we do install them on the water towers. Since these ones are lower, we're not getting the height that's needed in order to shoot over certain zones, but there are certain facilities that we do install on wire facilities. However, AT&amp;T is needing the height in order to shoot over the areas.
You know offhand, just to ballpark, what's the height that, or do you go with what's recommended by your engineer?
Correct, I go by what's recommended by engineer, which is the 60 feet.
Thank you.
Commissioner Heng? Vice Chairless? So essentially, at one point, if you needed, this could be an 80 foot tower?
Well, per the 6409 FCC law, yes, we could extend it up to 60 feet. That's not necessarily saying we would extend it, but that's saying another carrier could extend it.
You mean up to 20 feet higher, so it could be a total of 80 feet high?
Yeah, it's 10% or 20 feet.
Okay. And at that location, how much coverage, what area would that expand to?
The coverage that, for the cell phone tower?
In footage?
In footage.
Like what type of an area?
Cell phone towers generally could reach up to a mile, to a mile and a half, sometimes two miles, it depends on the terrain and the area and the surroundings. So granted, you're going to have a different coverage from a desert site that is flat, you could reach a lot farther and therefore, so there's not as many cell phone towers within those areas, but versus one where here in West Covina, or in West Covina and that area, it has more hills and so therefore that's why there's maybe more cell phone towers in this area. I do know we do have a cell phone tower at Mount SAC right there. And so this is just, you know, helping feed in that gap between Mount SAC and then off of Cameron and then for another facility that we may have in Walnut or...
Now, isn't Mount SAC within a mile of that, in that radius?
It could be, but it's maybe up to a mile up to the site, but then you're not shooting because the cell tower has three sectors and so that's shooting in different azimuths and different degrees on each sector, which is meaning it's picking up different... meaning it's picking up different speeds in the area. So it's not necessarily Mount SAC, depending on where the cell site is and how the antenna arrays are facing.
So the cell tower at Mount SAC, is that a 60-foot or an 80-foot?
I'm not sure where that facility is located. I believe it's on a rooftop, which might be 60.
I mean, because my question is, why couldn't you expand on what you already have in that area?
You mean expand at Mount SAC? Because that's not where our RF engineer search ring is, so that tower can only go so far. And again, with the terrain, so as you know, Mount SAC is, I would say probably about, I think it's a mile and a half away, but the terrain and there's hills.
Right, but you said it does go that far. So if you were to expand that and give it more height, then maybe you could go a little further. But anyways, I mean, we would need data, more data for this, in my opinion. Any other questions for the applicant before we close the public hearing?
I don't have anything further. I don't have anything further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to close the public hearing. We're going to open discussion within the commission. Commissioner Williams?
A couple of thoughts. I am aware of cities that have water towers in the Covina Hills area, where because of the height of those towers, they were able to install equipment on top. I did notice that the two towers that are there, which can be seen from the chain link fence at Heritage Park, are rather low. I do understand what they're saying as far as the equipment, and seeing that that is Valencia Water Facility, it is possible that they do have equipment and things underground. And I can understand why they would not want someone to perhaps affect their water service. I don't know that those residents are automatically being served by those two water tanks. But again, Valencia Water, I guess, is in a residential zone, but it also happens to be a use that is not residential, but it is part of infrastructure. The other thing that I am aware of, at one point, Diamond Bar High School actually had stadium lighting, and one of those lights or more actually provided cell site. And I had an opportunity to go there and see that, but that was quite a few years ago. And so I understand technology and things that do occur and can be improvements. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Hang?
I actually have a few concern. One of the concern is, one of the resident came up and said that in the past, if you visit the tank, it actually looked like the city or in the past was taking a lot of effort to hide that tank. I mean, obviously, we live there and we drink the water, and I was visiting this morning, and I noticed I barely see the tank. The tank is probably six feet, and if you walk up the path that they, the gate was open. So if you walk up the path to the top portion, it's barely, it's flush with the hillside. So from certain area, in this area, it's like a bowl. So you're having residents on top of the park area that will be looking down, which is the photo sims only taking from the park down, looking up. So we're not really seeing where the residents are seeing or will be seeing. The majority of our residents are living on hillside, and it's kind of curved up like a bowl, and it's pretty high up there. Obviously, from all the residents backyard, you can obviously see that, and I don't see that in the photo sim. I only see it from the street on Cameron, and only from the street from where, and it's written hidden behind the trees. It's almost like you're putting, here's a tree, and you're putting a towel behind it, and how are you going to see it like from over there? You can't very see it that way. But if you know the area, which I do know very well, and I've been living there for more than 20 years or so, and like most of the residents said, we do walk around there and we do have friends' backyards, we've been there, and we see that. It's unfortunate that I did not get a chance to go up to some of the residents on the other side because there's not enough time to take a look and take some pictures, but we don't see that, even in this photo sim. If the city, I don't know when, how long the tank was built, it was built a long time ago, Valencia High, and they go out of an effort, even for me, just going to look for it. The tank itself was huge. However, if you go up the side, you barely see it. From Heritage Park, you barely see the tank because it's buried under there. It took a lot of energy to build a tank that's under hidden so that you can't see the hillside because that is a hillside area. So that's very concerning to, for what one of the resident was saying is that, okay, in the past, it's not tolerated to expose the water tank in our residential area, but today, if we are allowing this to happen, we are exposing not only 60-foot, but the law is also on their side. What law was it they mentioned that it was here? It's the Middle Class Act Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012. Now, what that state is that, that section, what the AT&amp;T even mentioned, is the 6409, I think it's A, I can't really read because it's blurry. Of the tax act provides that a state or local government may not deny and shall approve any request for co-location. So what that means is, basically what we as a governing, what we are saying in front of us, that AT&amp;T is coming to us to ask us for a conditional use today, that no longer will be allowed in our case because this will be on AT&amp;T's side once we approved it. So we no longer have control over that cell site. Now, whether it's going to grow 20-foot each time or one time, I'm not very clear because you have to read the entire act, but the law is definitely on their side. If the resident did not come and tell us today, would we know about this law? They only said the maximum we can have is 60 feet, but they never told us that this thing can grow. I didn't hear that from them until one of the resident told us. The other thing that was concerning about this is that the cell farming, what does that mean? Is that law is for them as well? So if, I mean, it's almost an acre plus, forgot how many acre it was, that area. Does that mean that if the water company wants, what's another company? Verizon or T-Mobiles to come in because they want it and they want to make more money? Because to me, if you can't show me that there's a drop call in which resident that lives there, we can all go there. We all have AT&amp;T. If you tell us where the location is, we go there and we test it out. Is there a drop call? It's not, it's not a hard science. And all the neighbors here not only have, whether you have Verizon's, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, you can test them out, the neighbor can test them out. And some of the neighbors had said that they don't have any drop call while they're walking their dogs. So obviously, with the photo sim that they show us, on that data, it never said that is significant gap, and these are the drop calls. I didn't see that on the data. In fact, it didn't even say anything about drop calls or any type of data, just a color-coded map. I appreciate that color code, but to me, it's not a painting. This is the data that I need to have, how many residents that I need to look into that is being affected, and is this needed? Majority of the residents come here tonight, they don't want this tower. Regarding the cell farming, again, the law is on their side. They're saying that, what is it, section 704, which is the FCC regulation, states in localities may not take discrimination, discriminatory or prohibiting actions. So if you read further on in section 704A of the 1996 Act, now this code was passed in 1996. That's how many years ago? That's a long time ago, basically. And it basically, even at that time, it states that the regulations of the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless, by the way, guys, we're on page four, wireless facility by any state or local government or instrument thereof shall not unreasonably discriminate among provider of functionality equivalent service and shall not prohibit of having an effect prohibiting the provision of personal wireless. So in another word is, once we allowed our code, because right now, at this moment, they're coming in front of us is because the same law actually preserve our local authority. I mean, the five of us, one of us is trying to zoom in, but the five of us do have a say today. But if we were allowing to prove with no data, that mean tomorrow comes, we're not going to be able to say any of this all because the law each year is passed on telecom's behalf, not the resident's behalf. So the other thing is the aesthetics. A few of the residents comes here today and tell us that aesthetically, they don't like it. Now, would you blame them if the huge humongous water tank that we need is being buried in the hillside? And then all of a sudden, we're being told that, okay, you have to tolerate with this? 60-foot? In fact, it may not be 60-foot, it may be 80, 100, who knows? So the telecom law case, page five, Split versus Palace Verdis, it gives the city council or the planning commission in that fact because we're the authority to deny the application on the basis of aesthetics. So there are a few steps that we can do tonight. However, once it's approved, we cannot do anything. And I don't see any data from the company to state and tell us that, hey, there are drop calls, if there are significant gap, okay, we have to give it because there's no call whatsoever, and our resident needs it. In this case, it's a business venture. They want to make more money. Out of who is expense? Our residents' expense. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Chair Basara and Planning Commissioners, I just want to remind you that the required findings for any decision tonight are contained in your staff report to either approve or deny a CUP. There are, you know, the federal laws are what they are, and they're not what you're basing your decision on tonight. They are what they are. That's not within our authority to change or regulate. But what your decision will be based on is the required findings set forth in your staff report, which contains some of the considerations that Commissioner Hang spoke on, such as the, whether or not the particular location is necessary or desirable to provide a service or facility which will contribute to the general well-being of the neighborhood or community, or speaking to the aesthetics of the proposed design. So just want to remind you that any decision you make tonight should be based on those findings, and if you feel that you lack certain information to help you decide on whether or not certain findings can be made, then you could continue the item and request further information.
Thank you. Those two items are enough to base decision on. There's nothing else that you would need to even review. You know, we are, every person up here is a West Covina resident, but we approve in your neighborhood, it would be in our neighborhood tomorrow. As a resident for 51 years, since I was five, you know, we all love living in West Covina, or we wouldn't be here. This is our home. At this point, does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny.
I'll second the motion. Joanne, can you please call the commission?
I was going to say, if I could make a counter motion, one of the things that I certainly understand the concerns that were expressed by the public, I think, I do think to some degree though, I think additional data is necessary for us to make a decision on this. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the fact that we don't have information regarding what kind of a coverage gap we really have. We have sort of a broad overview, which I think, given the saturation of the marketplace, doesn't, frankly, I think we need more data on that. I'll also, also say, I'm not satisfied with the explanation of we don't know with regard to the underground vault feasibility. I think that we need an answer on that. I think that that is a very important aesthetic, aesthetic consideration here, and I think that those two particular items are things that this commission should have in front of us, and I think it should be brought back.
Commissioner Lewis, are you making, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Lewis, are you making a substitute motion?
That is correct.
And your motion would be to continue the item to the next?
To get additional specific data regarding the coverage gap, whether the coverage gap as is being presented is a capacity coverage gap, whether it is an actual coverage gap where people are not able to access data or voice services. And then two, the feasibility of undergrounding the equipment.
And would your motion be to continue it to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting?
That's correct.
And Joanne, do you have a date for that? And while Joanne's looking that up, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion. The next planning commission meeting is November 9.
Okay, so then we would vote on the substitute motion first, which is the motion to continue the item, to receive the additional information as outlined by Vice Chair Lewis, to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll go ahead and call the commission. Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Chair Basara?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on? We're voting to continue? No.
Yes, I'm sorry. Chair, Commissioner Hang?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
It's a tie vote, so it fails. So then we will go to the motion to deny the application.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Before I continue, Brian has been trying to, been waiting on the Zoom call for the last 45 minutes. Were you able to get him on?
It wasn't connecting at first. So we, the Zoom is off, and I responded to him. Sorry.
Has he been watching? Can he vote?
I don't think he's able to.
We can't patch him in if, I mean, if we technically are having difficulty.
Can he call in?
We don't have, we don't have the phone call in. We don't have that option right now.
There's two and two. Go ahead.
Did I leave off in?
For the motion for to deny. You're going to call the commission.
We'll start again.
Sorry, excuse me, Joanne, just, I know we voted on that last motion, but given what Commissioner Hang has just announced, that could be another factor for your consideration is to continue the item so that your fellow commissioner has the ability to participate.
Well, I'd like our decision to be on record. Commissioner Hang?
I'm sorry?
Me?
Yes.
So let's, we'll just go ahead and call the commission again.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Sorry, point of clarification, what are we?
So my understanding, my understanding is, Chair Basara, are you saying you just want to vote on the motion to deny?
Yes.
It would, it's a motion to deny. Vice Chair Lewis?
I don't have enough information, so no.
Chair Basara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hang?
Yes. Yes, to deny the application.
No.
So again, motion fails. It's a tie two to two. The commissioners can have further discussion or reconsideration. The commissioners can have further discussion or reconsideration or another motion at this time.
Anyone like to speak first? Commissioner Williams?
Well, at this point, the staff report and the findings that the staff laid out can be supported. When it comes to the residential zoning, which now allows for Valencia Water to even have their water tanks there, that is a use other than residential that is currently existing. The conditional use permit is required because they're asking to go to the maximum height of sixty feet. That I understand. In the report, the applicant did, under their justification study, they did spell out some specific things talking about coverage gap and capacity in the areas around Heritage Park and its surrounding neighborhoods. So understanding what Commissioner Lewis was suggesting, they could provide a matrix to show that to us if given the opportunity.
But I felt like they should know better, like coming up in front of us, and this is their business and this is what she does on a daily basis, that they should have these data. You're coming in front of us, asking for a special conditional use permit. You should provide us the data to say, hey, look, you have a hundred, five hundred, a thousand residents in this area that have dead zone, no receptions. But instead, they dance around with us, I felt like, using other terms and gave us a map that never said how many residents that actually have dead zone. It is not a, it's not a big science. Why can't they provide that information? It could have been provided months ago.
I would also like the names of the eighteen residents you sent notices to.
I mean, if it's months ago, if you had provided these data, the resident could have gone there and tested out at their door, back of their yards, inside, outside, in the brick wall, whatever it is that you had color coded, because you mentioned basically is the inside the house, outside the house. It's kind of a bit of things, but, but at least the resident had the opportunity. Because you're coming here to requesting to put this giant cell tower, if it's a benefit to the resident.
Giant cell tower that's only going to reach a mile. And the people it's going to reach aren't even going to be able to see it. It's the people that it's, you know, aesthetically, it's going to ruin their views. I, you know, it's not that we want to deny your, your, your petition, but that, you know, pick a different area. A different location. It just, this one just doesn't seem that it is. Thank you.
And also to me, it seems like it's, it's, it's just not right. If you had this coverage that it's only eighteen people for a cell tower, is that the many, as many people that you're going to cover? Is that, this is only how many people is being affected? I mean, obviously, if you think this is drop call, dead zone in like half a mile or a mile area you had mentioned, shouldn't you send it out to a mile?
They were going with what was called out on the conditional use permit application.
Correct.
Three hun- three hundreds foot radius. And so within that radius, depending on the layout of the properties and how large they are, obviously in areas where the properties are larger, right, you're not going to have perhaps a hundred more people.
I understand, Commissioner Williams, I understand that the law by code that only allows to send out to three hundred res, uh, three hundred feet, three hundred feet from the, for, for the resident who live around that area. I, I completely understand that. I, I also understand that the fact that with eighteen people with this cell site that a lot more residents can see, I think we should be able to expand it more. Otherwise, what, you want me to just think of it as, oh, the cell towers only affect eighteen residents?
Well, we don't know. Well, no, it's not eighteen residents because two of the list on here is West Covina City twice. One is Valencia Heights Water, and another one is an LLC who's probably just a, a company who, who buys homes. So really, there, it's not eighteen residents.
Chair Becerra and Commissioners, we, I'm, I'm informed that Commissioner Gutierrez has been observing due to technical difficulties. We have not been able to patch him in, but he has a desire to vote on this action. So I believe it's staff's recommendation at this point, since you are also deadlocked, apparently, to continue the item as Commissioner Gutierrez is continuing to express his desire to, to vote on this item.
Okay, so we take the vote again?
So if, if anybody wants to reconsider the motion for continuance, Chair Becerra or Commissioner Hang?
Still moved.
I'll second.
Well, Chair Becerra, technically, could we please get the people who voted against that, that motion to, to reconsider and move for continuance to the next meeting?
Wait, is Brian voting right now?
He can't vote tonight because we can't patch him in technically, but he's informing Joanne that he would really like to, he's been observing and would like to participate in this item.
So he cannot vote?
Not tonight.
So what happened? Can you explain to us what happened when there's a deadlock?
I'm sorry?
When there's a deadlock, what, what is the procedure?
You, you, unless you're able to un-deadlock yourselves, there's no, there's no action, but we must have you take some action in, for the process.
Okay, we will make a motion to continue for the next, next Planning Commission regular meeting.
And Chair Becerra, does your motion include the direction to the applicant to provide the additional?
Absolutely.
Regarding the?
And I'd like to see, I, I just don't think that this list of, of, it's actually a joke that you sent them to the city. There needs, I think that they should have sent out more notices to residents.
So, so my understanding is they sent out the required legal notice to the registered property owners?
Two to the city, one to Valencia Waters, and one to an LLC.
So what type of further notice?
I just don't think they gave the residents enough notice. I think this affects, especially because it's on hills, maybe they should have, you know, I, I know that they're only required a certain amount. Is that the three hundred feet? And there was only eighteen residents within, in that three hundred feet?
Through the, through the chair, yes, there was. A lot of these properties are very big. Heritage Park is a very big park, so it takes up a lot of space. The city was noticed twice because we own two parcels within that three hundred foot radius. And Valencia Heights was noticed as well because they own the property. The residential properties in the surrounding neighborhood and the park itself are rather large lots, so the amount of people being notices is smaller. We can provide you a copy of the map that they notarized and provided to us.
Well, maybe then it should have been three hundred feet from the property line.
So Chair Becerra, they gave the required legal notice. If you wish to give direction that the applicant do more community outreach, we can certainly ask for that.
I think between now and the next commission meeting, I would like to see that.
So for clarification, your motion is to continue the item to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting with the additional direction that the applicant provide outreach to the community before that hearing, and for the applicant to bring back information regarding the need for this site and information regarding undergrounding of, of facilities.
Yes, that would, that would work.
And I also like to add the fact that the photo sim of the towel is mainly from the ground up. I like to see some of the residents' backyard from the top down to see what they're looking at.
I, I think that will require authority and participation of those residents. So to the extent that.
So if they don't know about it, maybe try to ask them to see if you can take a photo from there. Do a little bit more outreach to the residents because not only, because this is, this site right here is like a bowl. If you look at it, all the photo sim that I saw later on this evening is mainly from the bottom up. So if it is a bowl, and obviously people from the top can look down and see it, they have an aerial view of this thing. So it's almost hidden, like I said, it's hidden behind a tree. Can you see my cellphone if you're taking a picture from the audience? You cannot. But if people sitting on the top portion where their, where the homes are, you know, I like, and, and the majority of those residents are West Covina residents. Because if you look at the map on this one right here, the property to the east of this is LA County. And I don't understand the one on the south property. You're saying that it's city land? But someone lives there.
Yes, so there's, um, there's a skinny parcel south of it that the city owns. I know it may not seem like it, but we do. I almost missed it myself. And then one parcel south of that is a private residence.
So how skinny is that skinny land? A foot? Ten feet? I don't even see it.
We can provide you with the dimensions, but it's, it's a unique shape, but we, we do own directly south to that property.
If you have to guess, can you let me know like about what your thoughts are?
Probably somewhere at the shortest width. Like I said, it's a unique shape, probably anywhere between thirty to fifty feet width.
I don't see that.
So Commissioner Hang would like to add to the motion additional simulations from different angles, including from above.
Correct.
Does motion, does the maker of the motion accept that amendment?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion? Anybody can second?
Before the vote, Chair, may we ask the applicant if she's able to provide us that information in time for the November, November ninth Planning Commission meeting? Because we do need to have that information at least a week in advance, so that would be next week. But I'm not sure that they're able to provide all that information to us by next week.
Okay. What is the next? Oh, go ahead.
Please, please come to the podium.
Additional photo simulations is definitely something we could provide prior to that hearing. It's going to be the community outreach in order to give the community enough notice in order to attend maybe another meeting. So that would require more, more time.
How much more? How much more time?
I believe the city requires me to give a ten day notice. Is that what it was from last time? That's not necessary. So I would say we would probably, in, in order to provide additional information, I would most likely need maybe two weeks after that. I'm not sure when your next?
Thirty days from today? Would that be okay or?
Yeah, probably three weeks from today.
What would be the next meeting, Joanne? After that?
That's a holiday.
That's, that's Thanksgiving. Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Can we do it after holiday, uh, the Thanksgiving?
After that, it would be December fourteenth.
December fourteenth, is that December fourteenth good or after the holiday period? After January?
I believe I would be able to get the items needed by December fourteenth. That would work for us.
Okay. And would you be able to get the, the drop call data as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
So Chair Becerra, it's your motion with the revision that the item be continued to December fourteenth, and so we'll need a second.
I'll second that.
Joanne, please?
And with the additional, additional informations that we needed?
With the community outreach, the undergrounding, the drop call information, the need for the site, and the further photo simulations.
Vice Chair Lewis?
I want to make a comment before I vote. What? Sitting here, I, I, I think one of the things that, that I saw, and I, I don't think it's appropriate, is for any commissioner to be lecturing an applicant. I saw that, and I, I feel like that was beneath this commission. And I want that to be noted for the record. At the end of the day, everyone who comes in front of us is coming in front of us, whether we think that they're good, bad, ugly, indifferent, at the end of the day, they should be treated with respect. And I feel like that was not done here to some degree. And at the end of the day, I think regardless of our own personal views on this particular issue, we ought to be mindful of that, keep an open mind with regard to how we vote, and move forward accordingly. To that end, I think it's very inappropriate that we are demanding additional outreach to an applicant, which is not required by law. We, we've never done that to anyone else. Never. That is unacceptable. Unacceptable. And for that reason, I will vote no on any additional outreach requirements that we are, that we are trying to impose on this applicant.
I would like to add a comment. Your desire to publicly chastise anyone on this commission publicly is unacceptable. Make that part of the record, please.
Roll call, please.
Chair, should I take roll on the roll call?
Are we still pulling the commission for the most, for the next commission meeting? Or December fourteenth? Have we already done that?
No, we haven't started yet. Commissioner, Vice Chair Lewis?
No.
Chair Becerra?
Yes.
Chair, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hang?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
We're voting to move it to the next commission, regardless of, of, we've already conceded to move it.
It's two-two, so the motion fails. Does anybody have another motion to make?
I will, I will stand firm. We've already, I've already conceded to move this for a continuance. Commissioner Hang?
We're, we're moving this is because our commissioners wanted to move this. And I'm not understanding why is it not, it's, it's not clear in terms of, you know, why they're not moving it. I mean, we had already denied the project already. It's on record that we denied it this, but you guys wanted to hear more informations on it. And we had already worked with you guys already to see our fellow commissioners and also to have our commissioners that's not here to, to, to be, to be heard and to make decisions on it. We had already made that accommodations, and you're not moving? I'm just not clear on that.
I mean.
I'll be very clear. I, I am fine with the motion just so long as we are not ordering or suggesting that the applicant have to do any outreach that is above and beyond what is required by law. I will not do that. I am an attorney. At the end of the day, what, what we would be doing is wrong and probably illegal. I'm not going to do that. Period.
So then we ask the applicant to see if they want to do some outreach. It's up to them to decide if they don't want to and follow the law. It's up to them to decide if they don't want to and follow the law, then we can very well do that as well. That's fine with me. So. I'm sorry, we're going to ask you to see if you're willing to do the outreach. Yes? At your discretion.
That would be something, I would just have to reach out with AT&amp;T and our legal team.
Okay. Okay, so that's not going to be a requirement. It's, you do so, it would be something that you would bring back with your data, you know, showing the commission that you are trying your best to help the community to make a decision, or to make the commission make a decision. It's up to you.
Thank you.
You want to call roll again, Joanne?
So, so.
Or roll?
Record, you're amending, or making, you're basically making a new motion based on the further discussion. The new motion will be to continue the item to December 14th, to the December 14th Planning Commission meeting with the direction on the additional photo simulations, the undergrounding, the drop calls, and, and site necessity, but without the requirement for community outreach.
Yes.
And the second?
I'll second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
Chair Basara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hang?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
4-0, to continue the item December 14th.
Okay, so at this time, we will move on, so that we'll meet December 14th? You said 7:00 PM regular meeting? Okay, all right, we'll be moving on to any non-hearing items. We have no non-hearing items on the agenda, so we'll move on to commission reports and miscellaneous items. Would any of the commissioners like to report or comment on any item? Joanne, are you aware that there are any items to report to the commission?
I did want to see if we could potentially look into, into drafting a code amendment as it pertains to telecommunications facilities moving forward. Specifically, as it pertains to the undergrounding, undergrounding of the cabinet facilities. This is something that's commonplace in other cities, and I think it's something that we ought to consider via code amendment. Staff wants specific direction, I can certainly provide examples.
I thought our code is for underground, our facility.
It's not.
It's only for city, only for city-owned land?
That's correct.
So it should apply to all to be underground? So we should have discussions about it? We should bring this up perhaps next year?
Code amendments for wireless communication facilities for, on private property and all land uses have been initiated by the council. It's something that we are going to be working on in the future.
Oh, so it has to be initiated by the city council?
It doesn't have to be initiated by the city council, but in this case, it already has been.
Oh, okay.
Do we have any indication when that might be coming back?
We've.
Coming to us, I should say, not coming back.
At this, at this time, no. I'm not sure when it's going to be coming to the planning commission.
Joanne, again, so are there any items to report to the commission?
So for the city council meeting that was last held on October 19th, the R1 RA standards that the commission approved, or recommended approval for was considered by the city council, and the city council voted to adopt the ordinance. And that will go to the, for a second reading on November 2nd. The, the delivery station project on 1211 Fadillo Street was also reviewed by the city council on October 19th. The city council voted to approve, to certify the mitigated NEG deck to approve the precise plan and tentative, tentative parcel map. The zone change and the development agreement will go for a second reading on November 2nd as well. And the city planning division will host a town hall meeting tomorrow at 6:30 here in the city council chamber. It's in regards to the housing element update. The draft six-cycle housing element was made available to the public, for public review last week. So that concludes.
Were there, so that was any, were there any actions taken by the council that pertain to the Planning Commission? So that concluded all of those as well? They included all of those? Okay. I have a quick question, though, Joanne. You had mentioned that the city council is going to have a second meeting for the R1 zone change. Does that include the garage that was going up 20 feet? Is that the one?
Yes, it's, it's not a second meeting, it's actually a second hearing. It's going to be on consent unless it's pulled up by the city council.
It hasn't been approved, or it has?
It's been, it's been introduced. The city council voted to approve it and adopt, and it'll be going to a second reading for adoption on November 2nd.
So that particular code, once it's adopted on November 2nd, so when does it apply?
30 days.
30 days after that? Oh.
Is December 14th.
At the end of the year. Okay, thank you. Okay, since there's no further business to consider, this meeting is adjourned at 8:40.